Can I ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag?
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call in the attendance.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero?
Yeah.
Counselor Vito?
Present.
Counselor DeJesus?
Present.
Counselor Hattlerburg?
Here.
Counselor Vega?
Here.
And Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Eleven members present, you have a call.
Okay.
First order of business is public speaking.
Anybody that's here for public speaking, Steve, you can take the podium.
This on, yeah, it is. All right, thank you. I'm Steve Staff here, the city's emergency management director, and I wanted to take just a few minutes to brief out on a plan that's been long overdue, is the city's evacuation plan. So we have many plans in the city, sheltering operations, continuity of government, and so on, that fall within the parameters of emergency management. But one particular plan that seemed to be missing was an evacuation plan. So, the plan is almost ready to be launched. We're gonna need the rest of December into the beginning of the new year, and it'll be published. The plan is very simple to read, unlike a lot of plans in the world of emergency management. It's not 100 pages long, something that is gonna be on the shelf and folks aren't gonna read or understand. This is a very simple, what's called an IP, implementation plan, six pages. And the plan exists, the plan contains, I should say, a summary or an explanation of the plan, activation triggers, how we can activate the plan, who can activate it. It talks about levels of response, so the plan is scalable. We have three levels. It could be as simple as a building needs to be evacuated, or a street, all the way to a full citywide evacuation and everything in between. The plan also talks about notifications, exactly how we're gonna notify the folks that are gonna trigger the plan, as well as notifying the citizens. And we have many tools that we'll be able to use to notify the citizens that an evacuation has taken place. Another piece of the plan are the evacuation routes. So, one of the sections lists out all the routes, the major arteries, in and out, north, south, east, west, and so on. Part of that will be working with DPW and Police Traffic Division in purchasing some signs, and we'll make a decision collaboratively where those signs are gonna go throughout the city, we'll have them posted, and then those signs will be attached to this plan. The last piece of it is an interactive map. And once that's complete, again, I'm shooting for next month, that'll be published on the city website, particularly the emergency management section of it. It'll be easy for folks to get to and easy to read. Working with our partners, again, police, fire, and Public Works, over the signage and the activation of the plan. Another section of it is gonna be exercise and training. We'll make sure that we do a tabletop exercise, and we'll probably incorporate in one of our full-scale exercises, an evacuation piece. The other piece of it is we'll communicate to our city and town partners that border us, Boston, Everett River, even Winthrop, so we can share that plan, and they could share their plan, because obviously they need to dovetail together. Any questions?
No questions, thank you. Anyone else for public speaking?
Hi, I'm Lisa Santigate, 221 Shertless Street, and I know that this is the last meeting for some people, so I just wanted to say thank you to Damali, to Enio, to Judith, who have I missed, to Brian, thank you for filling in, Brian, also to Ned, Ned's role will change, so thank you for everything that you have done for us in the city. You've helped me, you've helped so many residents, and I'm just sorry that as a counselor-elect, I won't get to work with you directly in January. So best of luck with your future endeavors, and thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else for public speaking? I'll ask again, anybody else for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Chair recognizes.
Out of respect for the members of the retirement board who are here, that we take the orders pertaining to their actions out of order at this time.
Seeing no objections, clerk will read the order.
We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council accepts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 20A, indemnifying members of the Chelsea Retirement Board, and be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council adopts the increase of the base COLA, Cost of Living Allowance, from $12,000 to $15,000 for retirees under the Chelsea Retirement System effective July 1, 2024 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, Section 103J.
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerburg. Thank you, Counsel. Yes, Chair recognizes Counsel Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank the retirement board for bringing this attention to this matter, and I'm happy that this is one of the last things I'm voting on. At our last council meeting, Mr. Shevko came and spoke about our aging population, and it's really a reality that a lot of us don't think of, and so I appreciated you naming it and explaining it to a way that was very real. And so, absolutely, I'm gonna be supporting this tonight, but I just want to thank you for your work and for your advocacy for our elders in the community who contributed to the city and shouldn't be penalized, right, for inflation and the economy and whatnot, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Chair will call, roll call on the adoption.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Julie Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven members in favor, none opposed, order is adopted.
Thank you. If you wanna take the podium and address the counsel, you can now, Mr. Shevko.
Again, I just wanna thank everybody for this vote, it's so important. I've been trying to do this for over the 10-year period, but it just didn't, wasn't appropriate at the particular time. I think we're in a position now to do this, and on behalf of all the retirees, and I just wanna say, this affects active members too, because they are gonna benefit from this too, once they retire, so it benefits the active members, as also the retirees too. But on behalf of the 417 retirees, I'm sure they appreciate it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business, we have approval of the minutes of the city council meeting dated December 4, 2023.
Calvin Brown moves to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there's no objections.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Chelsea City Council dated December 6, 2023.
Counsel Brown moves to accept them unanimously under suspension, seeing no objections.
We have communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding request to revised approval for increase in Emergency Housing Shelter Program. Dear counselors, I am writing to amend an order adopted by the council on November 6, 2023, for supplemental emergency housing funds, and to correct the funding account referenced to General Stabilization Fund Number 7020 from the incorrectly referenced Operating Stabilization Fund Number 7023. The November adopted vote has not been effectuated as the operating stabilization account was closed and funds combined into the general stabilization account a few years ago. All of the other particulars of the approved request remain the same and are repeated below, so that the record may fully be contained here. We have funds available for this purpose in our general stabilization account, the revised order is attached. Thank you for your attention and consideration on this important program.
Jim, Counsel Brown?
We have the rest of the reading, something's coming up, and it's just a correction also.
It's done, yes. Accept and follow communications, some will be coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear counselors.
The chair has the way of reading, but if we could just name the name and the board for the public.
Okay, the clerk will read the name.
And adopt unanimously under suspension.
We have to be adopted on a roll call vote, Counsel. Going to a second reading?
It goes to a second reading, actually.
The two appointments are Dr. Israel Molina to the Chelsea Board of Health, and Ms. Celeste Williams of Chelsea to the Council of Elder Affairs.
Let me move to a second reading. Counsel Recupero moves for a second reading, seeing no objection, so move.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting supplemental funds for Water and Sewer Department vehicle acquisition. Dear counselors, I am writing with a request for supplemental funds from the General Stabilization Fund Number 7020 to allow for vehicle acquisition on the Public Works Department to facilitate the replacement of a fire damaged vehicle. This summer, WSD III vehicle caught fire resulting in total loss. We expect for the replacement cost to be known more than $78,570 for the new vehicle outfitted with the crane installment. The city's insurance has provided a $47,785 reimbursement. Therefore, DPW is requesting a supplement of $30,758. For the above reasons, I respectfully ask the city council authorize the $30,758 allocated in the General Stabilization Fund to acquire a new WSD III utility vehicle. A draft of the necessary order to complicate this funding authorization is attached, along with a.
There'll be some coming up on the new business, seeing no objections.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval of a five-year contract for Fire Department Record Management System. Dear counselors, I am writing with a request that the city council approve up to a five-year contract for a new Fire Department Record Management System. The city plans to issue a request for proposals to replace the current software provider of RMS that is out of date and no longer supported by.
Counsel Hattlerburg? Accept and follow communications, some will be coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding Chelsea's 400 Celebration Fund appropriation from General Stabilization Fund. Dear counselors, I am writing to request the amount of $100,000.
Move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and follow communication under suspension, there'll be something coming up.
Something coming up on the new business.
Next, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the agenda items approved at the December 5, 2023, meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. Counsel Recupero moves accept and follow communication under suspension, seeing no objections, so move. Next order.
Next, we have a committee report received from Council President Robinson, Chair of the Select Committee on Hiring. Dear honorable members of the city council, as all of you are aware, Administrative Assistant to the City Council Jessica Carmanati submitted her resignation effective November 17, 2023. In order to accomplish several outstanding tasks and ensure a more smooth transition, she generously agreed to remain beyond her anticipated last day and ultimately departed on Friday, December 1. During our meeting on October 16, I submitted a communication announcing the appointment of a Special Committee on Hiring with the stated goals of updating the job description to ensure it accurately reflects the day-to-day functions the Administrative Assistant performs, soliciting applications, conducting interviews, and ultimately referring a finalist to the city council. The committee comprised of myself, Counsel Norah Leste DeJesus, and Clerk to the City Council Cliff Cunningham initially discussed the structure of the council office and how job duties are divided. After a productive discussion, an updated job description was drafted with a new job title and salary commensurate with the demands of the position. In order to more accurately outline the day-to-day functions of the position, we believe the newly-created Legislative Aid Administrative Assistant position will improve continuity of operations in the office. Three subsequent meetings of the Subcommittee of Hiring were held. The first meeting involved the vetting of resumes, with the committee ultimately selecting five candidates to reach out to in order to gauge interest and schedule interviews. Ultimately, two candidates were interviewed over the course of two separate meetings. The members of the committee felt scheduling interview sessions in the morning and afternoon would ensure people who work mornings or evenings would have an equal opportunity to attend. After a very productive interview, all three members of the committee enthusiastically recommend the city council hire Mohammed Brahimi as the next Legislative Aid Administrative Assistant. He has extensive experience in utilizing computer office programs, functioning in high-stress situations, multitasking, and maintaining attention to detail, and interacting with people from across a wide range of socioeconomic backgrounds, as both a supervisor and manager in the security field.
Mr. President, I just asked that we waive the rest of the reading, and there'll be something coming up under new business, and accept and follow communication under suspension.
Okay, seeing no objections, so move, we gotta know what's coming up.
Next, we move on to unfinished business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson being called back for consideration. The original order read, order that the city council authorize the appropriation of $100,000 from Operating Stabilization Fund Number 7023 to supplement fiscal year CIP 2024 Emergency Management Department Emergency Housing Shelter Operations Account.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
The proposed amendment changes the order to read that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $100,000 from General Stabilization Fund Number 7020 to supplement fiscal year CIP 2024 Emergency Medical Management Department Emergency Housing Shelter Operations.
Okay, Counsel Hattlerburg moves for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Counsel Brown?
Yes, on the adoption.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg? Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven members in favor, none opposed, the order as amended is adopted. We move on to second readings. We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time requesting approval to boards and commissions. For reappointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. Matt Frank of Chelsea; for reappointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Charlene McLean of Chelsea; and for reappointment to the Zoning Board, Mr. Hugo Pedromo.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Counsel McVito moves to adopt on a roll call vote, clerk will call a roll.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the board appointments are adopted. Next, we have an order received from Council President Robinson being read for the second time, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of $68,500 representing the deferred project appropriated under General Fund in the FY '24 Capital Improvement Plan for Fire Department M1 Mobile Repair Vehicle to a new FY '2024 CIP project, Fire Department H2 Training and Safety Division vehicle.
Counsel Hattlerburg? By roll call vote, seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson being read for the second time, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $140,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to the city manager's salary expense line to establish two additional staff positions for a total of five staff for FY '24.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Counsel Vito moves for a roll call vote on the adoption, clerk will call a roll.
A yes vote will be to adopt, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, order is adopted. With the last order under second readings already read out of order, we move on to 24 F21, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $150,000 from the General Stabilization Fund Number 7020 to a new FY '24 CIP project account for marginal street sidewalk.
Counsel Hattlerburg moves a roll call vote on the adoption, seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
A yes vote to adopt, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order is adopted. Move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the city manager instruct relevant departments to enforce the city ordinance prohibiting utility companies from performing work after 6:00 PM except for emergency purposes.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. What was your, what was your order?
Adopt under suspension.
Adopt under suspension. Thank you, Counsel. You have the floor, Counsel.
It seems that, I think the city does have an ordinance, they says you can only go from 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, but on special, something special, if I'm foreseeing, like something breaks or anything, they get a permit and they're able to work. But what happens to companies that don't have any particular emergency to work, and they still work? That's breaking the ordinance that the city has, so the city should go out and enforce to make sure that that doesn't happen, because I get complaints from people telling me that utility companies, and there's no emergency, or even cable companies go there at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and they're still doing this kind of work. So, if we have an ordinance to enforce it, it should be enforced. And something else, too, whoever issues these permits should tell the counselors, other people themselves, that something like this is gonna go on in your district, to expect it. Don't just do it at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, people work, people get up, you gotta be considerate to other people that live here. So, if we have an ordinance, we should enforce it, and I think we do have an ordinance, so it should be enforced, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Lopez?
Yes, thank you. I also want to speak on this, I've got a couple complaints regarding, there was a company working on Congress, I think Shertless, Maverick Street, it was 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, three times during two weeks, waking people up and making a lot of noise with these trucks. So, like Counsel Recupero said, there's an ordinance where any contractor, unless it's an emergency, like is the electrical power or gas, they can work anytime, but for cable or to fix phone lines or something else, it shouldn't be allowed. I think there's a regulation that they shouldn't do that. And, yeah, I would like to know, like Counsel Recupero said, who is giving this permits for them to work at 2:00 in the morning, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the Chelsea City Council begin the process of hiring an attorney for the council to consult as needed.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. You wanna move it to a conference?
No.
Okay.
We already have money to have a lawyer, it was, yes, we do, it was.
They took it back.
They, no, Clifford, did they take the money back? No.
Oh, then I really, sorry.
So, they, they didn't take the money, the money was allocated, it's still there. So, I believe that we should have, like, when you go to the doctor and you don't agree with what your doctor says, you go ask a second opinion, so you should ask for a second opinion, and I think this council should have. If you don't agree with your city solicitor tells you, or you want to be more explanation of what happens, you should ask somebody else. So I believe we should have it. This council had it a long time ago, I don't know why they did away with it, but it should be there again, so I believe that we should contact it and get in touch and get our own lawyer, just like that, and it'd be, I think it would be much beneficial to the council itself, because that way we can understand better and more precise of what we actually do. Thank you.
Counsel Vito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I don't, I won't be able to reap the benefits of having an additional lawyer, I do believe that it is time that we have someone that we can consult with. I think that with full respect to our city solicitor, she is the lawyer for the school, she is the lawyer for the city, as well as the lawyer for the city council, and I think it's almost impossible to really give people a non-biased opinion when you're, there's so many competing interests, so I think for the sake of us and the work that we need to do as a community, that we have, us having a lawyer on retainer to be able to consult with, to ensure that we're doing the work of the people within the legal parameters, is definitely something that we should be investing in. So, I 100% would urge the members of this council that will be returning next year to make sure that, they make sure that they vote in favor of us having someone to consult with, so we can continue to do the work of the people, thank you.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the Chelsea City Council look into hiring an employee to conduct research and perform other related job functions for the council.
Chair recognizes Counsel. Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counsel.
Other cities have people that work for the council and research, and I know most counselors say, well, go and research it yourself, but a lot of times, most counselors, even if we research it, we really, some of us, I admit it, I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand all the things that come in, so I'm not ashamed to say that I don't understand. If I don't understand and I wanna do a job for the people, I would like to know exactly what it is, what I'm researching for. You know, it's not that I'm stupid, it's just that I'm not a lawyer, that's it. So I believe that this type of job would help the counselors better, even the ones that are, know everything, that are lawyers, even for them, to have someone, every body that I know of in government has a someone that works like that, you know, that's what they do. This body in the city has nothing, why shouldn't we be on par with the rest of everybody else? We should be, if we gotta serve the people, and you really don't understand how much things are, isn't it better that you understand, that you do a much better job for the people? And that's, my belief is that, I would like to be more knowledgeable, if something comes up and I don't understand, I let this guy search it for me, and he'll give me the idea of what it is, and that way I can understand exactly what it is, and that way I can make a decision myself better, instead of going around researching and asking and then really don't understand what it is. I believe myself, and I hope all the other councils believe that, it would be beneficial to all of us to have someone like that to help us out, thank you.
Any other speakers on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council hire Mohammed Amin Brahimi as Legislative Aid Administrative Assistant to the city council with an anticipated start date of January 2, 2024, with the following conditions, a six-month probationary period, a six-month period to establish residency or receive a waiver from the city council, and a probationary salary of $54,819 to be raised to MM6 Step 1 upon successful completion of the probationary period.
Chair recognizes Counsel DeJesus.
Thank you, Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt by roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll on the adoption.
A yes vote will be to adopt, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerburg?
Yes.
Counsel Vega?
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order is adopted.
Amin is sitting in the audience, if you wanna just kinda give away so council knows know who you are.
Stand up, stand up.
Congratulations.
[applause]
All right, I would like to thank you all, appreciate it for giving me this opportunity, um, I'll do my best to be the biggest help for everybody, and, uh, um, yeah, that's all, thanks.
All right. Congratulations again. Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars from General Stabilization Fund, number seven zero two zero, to operating budget authorized from C...
Brian Hattlerberg moves for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Second reading.
Huh?
Second reading.
Move to a second reading, sorry about that. Losing my mind up here.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve, the Chelsea City Council approves a five-year contract for the fire record management system.
Council Hattlerberg moves it to a second reading, seeing no objections, so move. Next order?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council Lopez, order that the city manager and chief of police provide an update as to the status of a council order adopted on October sixteenth, requesting a team be sent to install a camera on light pole number V Z sixteen by the garden on Marble Street.
Council Lopez?
Adopted under suspension, I would like to speak on it, please.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Councilor.
Thank you, um, originally I put this order for second time, because I haven't received any, uh, update from city manager or chief about this, uh, the order said here, it was adopted on October sixteenth and nothing has happened, and I haven't received any notice, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Next order?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council Recupero, order that the city manager instruct the Department of Public Works to ensure all crosswalk markings throughout the city are clearly painted to ensure pedestrian safety.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, is there no objection, I'd like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Councilor.
Um, a lot of parts of our city, the signs wear out, that they're on the ground, people, you know, the crosswalks and everything, they, they, they kind of faded away, we have a machine, before we never had a machine, we had to hire an outside company to do such work, now we do have a company, we, our own employees can do that, so I should think periodically, they should go around the city and make sure that all the signs that are on the ground, the stop sign, everything, that are done, that are clearly visible to the people of our city, there should be no issue why there shouldn't be, at least once a year, they should go around all over the city and do it, should be no problem, it should be done, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Next, next order?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council Lopez, order that the city manager instruct the D P W Commissioner to send a crew to fix the metal catch basin cover in front of seventy-six Shawmet Street, as it currently makes loud noise when vehicles drive over.
Chair recognizes Council Lopez.
Adopted under suspension?
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Councilor.
There is a, a metal cover for this catch basin that, uh, they actually fixed it before, but right now, as cars go over all the time, it makes a very loud noise, and, uh, I would like to see if they can fix it, thank you.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from General Stabilization Account to the semi-centennial celebration account fund series.
Council Hattlerberg moves to a second reading, seeing no objections, so move.
Move on to public announcements.
Any public announcements? Council Lopez?
Well, this is not a public announcement, it's just saying goodbye, and I want to read something that I, I wrote, uh, "Good evening fellow councilors, colleagues, and residents of Chelsea, eight years ago, I started my journey as the first ward in Malibu City Council, it has been an honor, an honor to serve Chelsea, and it has brought me great joy, I'd like to start by, off, by thanking my wife, my family, and friends for all the support, and especially the voters that elected me and gave me the opportunity and the trust that they gave me over these years, to my colleagues, it's been a pleasure working with you, we haven't always agreed, but our main focus has been, always, always been to make Chelsea a better place, thank you to all the department heads for your collaboration, as I step down in my, end of my term, I'd like to wish the next city council good luck, as a community member, I promise to remain vocal and active in our city of Chelsea, thank you very much."
Thank you, Councilor. At this time, I call on Council Recupero.
I have the honor and pleasure to give my fellow counselor a plaque for his service, it's been my honor and pleasure to have served with my fellow counselor, he's a great counselor, a great person, and you couldn't ask for a better public servant than Mr. Enya Lopez, thank you for your service.
I thank you, to all of you for this, and I appreciate, and like I said, again, we never, well, we, we never always, we not always agree in some things, but, uh, it was a pleasure working with you, it was really great opportunity for me to learn a lot of things in the city of Chelsea, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Taylor?
So, it's my, uh, great pleasure to present, uh, my fellow counselor, Brian Hattlerberg, with the same, uh, plaque and recognition for your dedication and service as council at large in the city of Chelsea, thank you, uh, Brian, for stepping up when the council needed you, uh, when one of our members had to resign, and I appreciate all the work and diligence that you bring to the job, and I'm sorry to see you go, thank you. Yes, I'll just say thanks, thanks to the people of the city, I appreciate your putting up with me here, and, uh, thanks to my fellow councilors, I appreciate you trusting me with the role, and hope I served it out as you would like.
Thank you. Council Brown?
Thank you. So, I have the honor to introduce and thank, uh, a, a dedicated, um, not only public service, but a city service and a state rep service, so it gives me an honor and privilege to, um, thank Judith Garcia for her work, for her dedication, her commitment, for being with us on this journey, all this work that's been done on your tenure as a city council has been because of your leadership and part of your, um, your, your just wittiness and, and ways to just try to make Chelsea better for everyone, I remember when you came out with the support and wanted to do something for the business communities and work with the funeral homes during the COVID to try to make families a little less burden with having a cost of putting ones to their loved ones to rest, but you have done an incredible job, not only have you done an incredible job here on the city council, the residents of this city recognize that, and they also voted you to be their state rep, so I know as we lose you here, that we, this state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they gain a dedicated, incredible young lady that's already doing great things down at the State House, um, you have been an absolute pleasure for me to just watch and, and watch you mature over the years that you've been on the city council and work with everyone, and, you know, it's been some ups and downs, but you got through them, your, your toughness, um, you're a very tough woman, but a very fair woman, and I want to thank you and also your mother for doing such a great job with you, I've known your mother probably longer than I've known you, and it's just an honor to wish you the very best, um, the city of Chelsea here, our city councils, we recognize your service, dedication as council of District Five in the city of Chelsea, congratulations, please stay active in Chelsea as your state rep.
Mr. President, if I may speak?
You have the floor, Councilor.
Um, wow, uh, Councilor Calvin Brown, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For your words, thank you so much for what you have taught me along the way, and I also want to thank my colleagues, because every single one of you taught me something and helped me become a better leader, it's been eight years, and it's very difficult to reflect and really highlight the accomplishments throughout these eight years, but I can say that if there's anything that this city taught me, is that we're more powerful when we work together in partnership, so even though today I closed the chapter of being a public servant as a city councilor for District Five, I reflect and I'm grateful to the voters, to the people who believed in me for eight years and kept bringing me back, because I was able to make waves, but not alone, I was able to make waves with everyone here, I was able to build coalition when everyone, with everyone out there, and, um, most recently I, I made history, but it wasn't on my own, it was thanks to the raising, my mom raised me as a strong woman, a determined woman, but this community also shaped me, and I thank the community, I thank the voters, I thank my colleagues, but above all, I recognize that public service is not a job, it's a calling, and I'm glad that a new council is coming in, I see Lisa Santigieg, who will be taking the seat, and I am very sure that you will thrive, I look forward to seeing the impact that the new council will have, a council that will be diverse, this council here made history back in twenty sixteen, we had zero representation, zero Latinos, we flipped that, and the power really showed with the policies that we passed, and I believe that the voters elected fresh people, fresh ideas, and I remain optimistic that good things will come from that, so, thank you, it's been eight incredible years, and I'm humbled to now continue to be your leader at the state.
Mr. President, I'd also like to present this evening, um, so, someone who I am going to be, uh, presenting this plaque to this evening is a individual who pretty much you can say is outside the box, entering this council, she was very unique, very bold, very loud with her ideas, with her, um, beliefs, um, and, and she was not scared to call things out, um, when they happened, and I think that, um, as many have shared, um, in the time when, um, she was elected, um, Damali was entering a council that was not as diverse, and, um, was not, um, so used to thinking, um, uh, the way that she was thinking, and so it wasn't, um, as easy, I would say, as, as some folks have it now, and I think that, um, Damali, I thank you so much for being able to pave that way for many of us, for being able to use your lived experiences, um, your life, that many can relate in our community, um, to, uh, just to sh, to demonstrate that there is no cookie cutter for the seats up here, if you truly want to make a difference, if you truly want to speak your voice for those who are not often, um, heard, you can do it, um, and you can do it sometimes without even campaigning, this woman, we joked this year, Pulso was joking this year, because we were like, even if she doesn't decide to run, people might still put her name on the ballot, and she has no choice, she'll have to still come back to Chelsea. Um, what can I say, uh, Damali, I'm so proud to have been able to work with you these past two years, um, I feel like this is exactly, um, the direction that our Chelsea City Council should be moving into, um, being able to create new systems, create new relationships, and explore new ideas that maybe would have been denied, you know, years ago, but now are welcomed and are, um, encouraged, um, thank you, Damali, and, uh, Manita, if you change your mind, you can always come back next year. [laughing] Thank you, Damali.
You have the floor, Councilor.
You might want to take a seat, I need a couple of minutes.
You can take as much time as you want.
Thank you kindly. Um, I think being a leader is knowing when it's time to hang up the gloves and pass the torch, and when I first came on this council, when I was elected in two thousand fifteen, I started with a group of Chelsea residents that we were working on a ballot initiative to talk about if we should change the form of city government from a ma, uh, city manager to mayor role, and I called the State House and got lucky enough to talk to Calvin Brown on the other side, who was very helpful, um, but in the process of us mobilizing, the community said, why don't you run for office, and I said, because I'm not a politician, and they said, well, that's exactly why you should run, and so I said, okay, um, and I didn't know, the universe has a funny way of working, but I didn't know that there were the Luis Tahadas and the Judith Garcias and the Enya Lopez and Jameer Rodriguez, but we made history when we came in in twenty sixteen, we, and [laughing] we made history, and finally we had representation, and when I say representation, I'm, I just don't mean ethnicity or culture, but diversity in thought, diversity in ability, bringing a voice of disable, uh, disability, bringing a voice of a different race, where Latino culture intersects with Black culture, we talk about, about being a woman, we, uh, there's so many ways, being a parent, um, and I think that ultimately, we were representative of our community, and we weren't, we, we're not a monolith, right, Latinos aren't a monolith, we don't all wear the same suit every day, we all have different lived experiences, I look at the work that I've been able to do in the past eight years and build relationships, uh, with every single person, including the ones that you wouldn't expect, like the Bob Bishop's and the Todd Taylors and the Brian Hattlerbergs, um, because we could, we come from different sides of the tracks, I mean, there was a point when Todd Taylor and I were hardcore enemies on social media, but we went to lunch one time and we vowed to not look at that and to observe each other's humanity first, and then after that, we were able to work, uh, together and get a lot of things done, and it's been an honor, and, you know, thank you, sometimes it was just you and me fighting, and you always had my back, Recupero, just remember to bring the microphone down every time we're in meetings, and thank you for doing the work of the people and being so passionate, Hattlerberg, thank you for bringing a sense of, um, centeredness into this council at a time that it was much needed, Todd Taylor, I already gave you your flowers, I'm not giving you anymore, Melinda, uh, I know it's not easy being the son, the daughter of Gladys Vega, right, but I appreciate the work for you do, that you do here as an individual, as a woman, as a mom first, Cliff, you already know, we had our bumps, but I appreciate the work that we've been able to do here together, and I think we made such the right decision when we hired you, Leo? Man, Joe would be crazy, but I will say, Leo is one of the best city councilors in terms of, he's at every high school game, he's in the community, there's not an event he misses, like, Leo is everywhere, and it's, it's a touch of old-school politics that I think sometimes lacks here, and so I thank you for your wisdom and all the years of experience, and recognizing what you had to go through when you were a Black counselor at a time when that wasn't accepted, thank you for your service, Calvin, we'll send you a birthday card, Christmas card, he remembers your kids' birthdays, their names, shout out to Calvin, it is a gift to be able to care about people, so [laughing], so genuinely remember that, Norielis, thank you for presenting my award, for those that don't know, she's currently the city council president select for the next coming year, so it's, um, an honor to have you present this, uh, plaque to me, I broke the record when I was, uh, the president of the city council for two consecutive years, and I really hope that you break that, um, Danadi, it's been an honor meeting you, I know that we were on opposite sides of the track, um, because of the way that politics and people do division to conquer, but once we were able to connect, it's been an honor to get to know you, and I believe that we will be friends for a while, Judith Garcia, how many fights have we had? [laughing] I respect you, I appreciate you, I think that a lot of times when we were put in opposite, there were, there was always a wedge... I think that a lot of times when we were put in opposite, there was always a wedge. There was always, there was someone deliberately trying to create a wedge. But I have always admired you, and I know you've admired me. If you're going to admit it or not, that's your business. But I know, I know that there's respect there, and it's been an honor to work with all of you. To the people in the community, I am so grateful to have been able to serve in this city. You guys have voted for me time and, one time, I wasn't even around. I was sick, and I still got voted in. I don't, I just, I don't say that like, like I don't appreciate it. At the end of the day, people like me don't typically make it to spaces like this. And it's so important to remember the people that aren't always fitting the mold, as my sister colleague said. And so, I just wanted to challenge the system to make sure that we can create a world that my daughter can thrive in, that all of our children could thrive in. And I never stopped, and I have no regrets. And I know that I came in hot, and sometimes I came in a little bold and strong, but I've learned a lot, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have been able to serve. To all the new electeds that are coming in, I just want to make myself available. I gauge my success by how I support people of color, women, serving in politics. And so, it would be an honor for me to be served even as a sounding board, or if you want to, if you have a question about process. I just, I have a lot of institutional knowledge. I'm not sure what to do with it. So, I'm happy for you all to come and pick my brain. I want to thank my family, my husband and my daughter, who are sitting in the back. My daughter, especially who, I got into this because I was trying to create a better world for her. And now, she's, she came in when she was this big, and now she's taller than me. She's going to study abroad in London, and I have to let her go. So, to think that the whole time I've been here, it's only, this is all she's seen for most of her life. And so, I know, we don't realize this, but our families are the ones that really pay the price for the time that we spend in community. And so, I'm just grateful that my family has been so supportive. Tony, thank you for putting up all the signs, even when people would knock them down, and you'd go back and put them up the next day, because we fight back out here. City staff, we have an amazing city staff. I believe in this community, which is why I have fought as hard as I do. And we all saw the beauty of our community when we banded together like we did during COVID. So, cheers. Cheers to new beginnings, to the new city council, to everybody. I hope, I wish you all well. It's been the honor of my life to serve this community, and I love you all for many different reasons and in many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would personally like to thank everybody. Damali, you brought a lot of good things to the council. You know, we might have been on different sides on different things, but after it was over, we left it here at the council. That's very important for lessons for the new council and old councillors who are here. Enio's, not only thank you for what you did here on the council, but thank you for transferring my brothers from the soldiers' home back and forth to their appointments. That was a very important thing that you do every day besides being a city council. Judith, from a Symboli scholar to the State House, you brought a lot to the table, and I personally want to thank you. And Mr. Hattelberg, he was my finance guy. We could always talk about finance. He brought a lot of good things to the council in its previous setting and now in this setting. I just want to thank you for all that you do, and thank the rest of the councils. I wish everybody a healthy holiday. And before we leave, I have to, a couple moments of silence. Any public announcements?
Now, before we go to moments of silence, I again like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. We haven't done that, so from the council, we extend our best wishes and safe travels. If you travel throughout the city, throughout the state, throughout the country to visit loved ones, please be careful, please enjoy yourself, and be kind. Thank you.
Mo Wanda.
So, first and foremost, I want to say to my male peers, thank you for your years of service and the impact that you've done for our city in working as a united front with both you and with Enio and Brian. To my sisters in service, to Jude, you know, we made history when supporting you in your campaign for state rep. And who would have ever thought, right, that would be the case when we had that little heated, intense, you know, moment here? But that same night, that same night, we hashed it out. Like, in the car, as like two strong Latina women that we are, we hashed it out. And from that moment on, I gained a friend, and a friend that goes beyond here. And I just want to say thank you, and in some of my most difficult times, your prayers were there for me, and you didn't even know it, you know? And for that, like, I will always be thankful. So, muchisima gracias. Te aprecio un monton. De verdad que sí. Te quiero mucho. And to Damali, I just want to say, thank, and, you know, sometimes we were at odds too for political reasons and, you know, other stuff. But I just want to say that I genuinely, genuinely am so thankful for your words of encouragement always. Regardless of that stuff, you've always believed in me, and you, you know, you've always given me a call, even in moments that I would never expect. I would say, this year has been trials and tribulations for me, for many things. And when I least expected it, you were that, like, wow, that strength that I needed. And those words, I, oh my gosh. So, I will forever be thankful. And, you know, you have a gift because you have a sense when, like, I need that, those words of encouragement and motivation. And you see pasta and like, pasta bies. And so, I will forever be thankful. And as a woman, you inspire and motivate other women, and I want to maintain that here, which is super necessary because sometimes that's not always the case, you know? Like, it's hard being a woman and a Latina and all that. And we have to remember that we can't let tension that doesn't even exist to exist. And we should always focus on working together and working as a united front and being a support system even when you least expect it, because that's what I received from you. So, I thank you for real. To your daughter, you have an amazing mom. De verdad que sí. And I know you know that, but you know, I just want to say that too. As a mom, I think it's good to hear those things. So, muchisima gracias. Y también te aprecio. Te quiero mucho. Thank you so much.
Actually, we have one more get-together on Thursday, the twenty-first. And that's the transit, new zoning that we have to take a vote on. We need eight votes for it to pass. And if we don't pass it, we will not be eligible for twelve grants on the state level. So, it's important that we do end up with a call. I have a couple people for a moment of silence. Two longtime friends, Jimmy Isles and Reggie Wilkerson, who is an outstanding athlete here in the city of Chelsea. So, we're going to have a moment of silence.
I want to have a moment of silence for the civil unrest and what's happening in Gaza and Palestine.
Again, my prayers and thoughts are with the Wilkerson family. They've been a very great pillar in this community. His sister, his mother passed, but the family didn't let that stop them from giving back to the community. They started a scholarship where they gave money back to help research here in Chelsea for cancer patients. And again, former All-Stars football player here in Chelsea. My thoughts and prayers are to the Robertson, Wilkerson family tonight.
Okay, seeing no further business before this council will adjourn.